Okay, good evening. It's October 23rd, 2014. The Board of Education meeting in Hyde Park Central School District. We are at North Park Elementary School and the time is 5:30. Close enough. May I have a motion to enter into executive session to discuss confidential matters pertaining to the employment, future employment of a particular person, please?
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor? We're now in executive session. Thank you. Well, I guess we're ready to go. May I have a motion to exit executive session, please?
So moved. Second?
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. We're back in regular session. At this time, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is over there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty, justice for all. Thank you. I believe there are no agenda modifications. May I have a motion to adopt the tonight's agenda, please?
So moved. Second?
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. That brings us to Pride.
Okay.
I know there's a lot of sports things been going on.
Yes.
And it was a great concert last night. Hope you didn't miss it. It was really good.
So, yeah. Well, as I'm collecting my notes, I'll begin. We'll start backwards. Last night was the Harvest Pops Concert at FDR. It was a packed house, standing room only. It was an absolutely fantastic concert. I know that a number of board members were here, so I will say that the finale, which was the full-string orchestra, a medley of the Phantom of the Opera accompanied by our digital Allen theater organ was absolutely phenomenal and received a standing ovation. So I don't know if any of the other board members want to comment on the concert while I dig out the athletic notes.
Well, I was there. Kevin was there. Viva there. It was well-attended. It was a really, I think, a special night. I thought the singing was quite good. I liked the, especially just while you're looking there, it was Halloween dress-up. And so, this guy who had to be six foot two or three and maybe 200 pounds was dressed in a long dress and a bright yellow wig, and he was playing in the orchestra. And then he came out to sing and he, I mean, it was obviously, it was a he. And he's in the guy's section, and one of the songs, there's a solo for a very, very low voice, and he was the one that did it. It was hysterical. It was really, I mean, it's just like Bruno Hilda looking, and I thought that was kind of cool.
Yeah, it was. So, on the athletic front, congratulations to the golf team, our boys' golf team, that won the Mahal Championship, and three of the boys are qualified for sectionals next spring. I had the opportunity to see the girls' volleyball team this past week on Tuesday night. They were playing for their spot in the Mahal Championships, and they won by beating Poughkeepsie three games straight in a row, so they didn't have to play the full five games. So congratulations to the girls' varsity volleyball. Cross-country team is competing in the Mahal Championship tomorrow at Mills Mansion. The football team will be battling Menis Inc. at the division game on Friday night. I believe that's away?
At Menis, yeah.
At Menis Inc., yeah.
It is away.
And the boys' soccer will be playing in their first round of sectionals at Washingtonville on Monday. And the girls' swim team will be in the county championships at Washingtonville on Saturday. So as you can see, it's the wrap-up for the fall season, and almost every one of our fall athletic teams are in the final tournament. So congratulations. It was a great fall season. Last night was, no, another night before, was College Information Night at FDR. Very well-attended. Each year, it gets better and better. This is a program for actually any parents, freshman to senior year, but certainly, we get a lot of parents of seniors who turn out. There are seven workshops, and they're offered on a rotating basis so that parents can, if they choose one, they don't have to not go to a different one. So, a real nice mix-and-match of the evening, so everybody can go to what they want to go to. And this is a collaboration, not only with our own staff that comes in and gives of their time, but with Dutchess Community College, SUNY New Paltz, and some of the other area colleges. And another item of pride, Aviva and I were able to attend the Children's Home Tea this year with some of our teachers. I'm trying to see. I know we have a number of our teachers here tonight, but this is an annual event. The Children's Home is within our school district, and when the children are placed there, they attend our schools. And they have a lovely tradition each fall, and it's called the Gold Star Teacher Program. And it's actually an essay project, and students write essays about their favorite teachers and why, and how they've influenced them. And certainly, not all of the children can get up and read their essays, but the three children who did read their essays read about three teachers from the Hyde Park Central School District. So it's a lovely event, and we really are pleased to have the partnership with the Children's Home and to support them, especially on this evening. And last but not least, and this is hot off the press, I just received this today, maybe it came in yesterday, but I saw it today. We were informed by the Hyde Park Visual Environment Committee that the Hyde Park Central School District and the HPTA will be recognized this year by the Hyde Park Visual Environment Committee, specifically, the District on the renovation of the FDR Track and Field Facility, and the teachers for that beautiful garden bed on Route 9G. And Dan, I did see you this past week out there. I was going to honk my horn, and I thought, I don't want to create a traffic jam, but duly noted, I saw you out there weeding it, and your efforts, as well as those of your colleagues, are not going unnoticed. They are going to have a beautification award ceremony on Thursday, November 13th, at the Henry Wallace Center. So, congratulations to the HPTA, and we'll be talking amongst ourselves about who can attend that event, who receive the award on behalf of the district.
All right. Thank you. Any board members have any pride that they want to share? All right. Moving on. Well...
Yes, so moving on. I'll announce this one. Every year, we have, it's a statewide event. I'm sure there's one that happens in all states, but every year during October, we set aside some time for Board Member Appreciation Week. And we certainly have a lot to be proud of with our board members. We have a history, in the past 10, 12 years, of having incredible stability on the board, very dedicated board members. You'd have to walk in their shoes to understand how much time it takes to be an effective board member. The amount of time alone spent on listening, responding, whether it's face-to-face, through telephone calls, emails, is unbelievable. And it's always done in a respectful and in an open manner to really try to understand and listen. I can say that each one of the board members is receptive to public feedback, and the feedback from the public is always greeted with openness, receptivity, and with an offer to help, or at least help understand when there is a conflict. You don't see us with board packets anymore, but the board packets used to be, no kidding, two and a half to three inches thick. That's how much reading material is provided for each board meeting. I can tell you that there's not a single member of this board that does not read every single paper, piece of paper presented. When we get together, they're knowledgeable, they know the issues, they've read the materials. We have in-depth intellectual conversations on everything that is put in front of them. So, on behalf of the district, I do want to say that you have seven committed, dedicated, and professional volunteer board members. This is a volunteer position. And from me personally, from the bottom of my heart, thank you for all your hard work. Thank you for working together as a team. You have a great way of knowing how to agree and disagree, and really get things done. And if you just each take a moment and think about what all the accomplishments of the district are for the time that you've been on the board, they're numerous, and we thank you for your support. In front of you, in particular, is a beautiful bag from the district clerk and the district treasurer. Those are two unique positions. They report directly to the board for their duties, so they have provided you with a goodie bag. And on behalf of the district, you all now have a jump drive, a board member appreciation jump drive as well. So, thank you for all you do.
Scan for viruses. So, was the jump drive scan for viruses?
Let's hope so.
Thank you. At this time, you have a...
I have two brief things. One is rumor control. I like to squash some rumors. We, I had the occasion to visit Ralph R. Smith Elementary School this week, and I was accompanied by Wayne Curland, our Assistant Superintendent for Business, and our Director of Facilities and Operations, and two other gentlemen. And it was just a school site visit to some people that are interested in doing some prospective work in the district. And lo and behold, the next day, our Assistant Facilities Director showed up with someone else just to do some other type of work, and a rumor went rampant immediately that we were all there because we were closing Ralph R. Smith. We were there on official business. It is rare that I show up in a building accompanied by five people, but, four people in my case. I'm in the schools frequently, but I understand that it might have caused some alarm, but it has nothing to do with the closing of a school. And the last, I'll just make one more announcement for the Grace Smith event we are holding next Monday night. That's a domestic violence awareness evening. We will be accompanied by Senator Terry Gibson and multi-award-winning Natalie Merchant, where we will view the Natalie Merchant film that was presented, that was filmed that barred college on domestic violence. It is for adults and children 14 years or older. The format for the evening is we will watch the film Shelter, which was produced, and Natalie Merchant appears in the film, and she will be with us that evening. It starts at 6 o'clock, followed by a viewing of the film. There will be some guided conversations on domestic violence. So that's Monday evening at 6 o'clock.
All right. Thank you. We're now up to 6.2. Hyde Park Rotary Dictionary donations. Matt Cruz.
Good evening. Thank you. My name's Matthew Cruz. I'm a member of the Hyde Park Rotary Club, here on behalf of my club tonight, to ask the board permission for us to continue our dictionary project. It's something that we've done for many years. We provide all third graders in the Hyde Park School District with a Webster dictionary. It's theirs to keep. The children love it. I know the teachers do exercise with the kids. The monetary value of that is about $550.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's always nice, I like books, you know? I like to turn the pages. And some kids don't know what a dictionary is, and it's really important to keep connected in that medium, although most people watch as they type, oops, I did that wrong, and then you back up and it corrects itself for you. But it's still good to know how to look up a word, how to look up, you know, definitions and things. So thank you very much for your donation. Now we're going to have a presentation, 6 point, I mean, 6.3, for the North Park Elementary School, the principal, Lisa Heck.
Yes, except I'm going to hijack it for a minute. We do have an additional pride tonight, and we would like to recognize certainly North Park Elementary School, but very specifically Lisa and Margaret Roble. The North Park Elementary School is the recipient of, and named as, one of the Let's Move Active Schools Champions. This is an initiative by Michelle Obama, and there are only a number of schools across the United States who receive this recognition, and Lisa can give the details in a minute. But I did want to take this opportunity to read publicly the letter from Michelle Obama to the North Park Elementary School, and specifically, everybody knows that it's Margaret Roble, who is the champion of our North Park Elementary Physical Education Program. You may recall that Margaret was Teacher of the Year and has been the recipient of numerous awards. She is certainly a stellar physical education teacher and goes the, no pun intended, extra mile every opportunity. So I'll read this letter. Dear Let's Move Active Schools Champions, Congratulations, North Park Elementary School. I was thrilled to hear your school has received the Let's Move Active Schools National Recognition Award. This effort is a key part of my Let's Move Initiative, which seeks to make schools a healthier environment for our children. We launched Let's Move Active Schools to offer staff, administrators, and parents the support they need to find innovative solutions to the challenge of providing students with 60 minutes of play every. When kids have positive experiences with physical activity, it helps them develop healthy habits that they will carry throughout their lives. Our strength as a nation and our ability to responsibly shape our future depends on tackling childhood obesity, and I am inspired by the work North Park Elementary School is doing to help build a brighter tomorrow for our next generation. You have set an example for schools across our country with your commitment and dedication to providing students with the opportunity to get outside and get active each and every day. I hope you will reach out to other schools and offer your expertise and advise them to help them become Let's Move Active Schools as well. Thank you for all you have done and will continue to do for your students. This is an extraordinary accomplishment, and you should be incredibly proud of what you have achieved, both Lisa and Margaret and the whole North Park community. I wish you all the best. Michelle Obama. So, congratulations.
And it comes with a certificate and a banner. So I'd ask Margaret to come up and be the recipient of this certificate. Thank you. Congratulations. Behind us.
Thank you, Greer. And I just wanted to take a minute to say that we certainly wouldn't be where we are without Margaret and the support that she gives, and the reminders, and the encouragement, and the innovation on a daily basis to keep us all moving. We are one of 21 schools in New York State and approximately 700 schools nationally. And I've asked Margaret just to say a couple of words about some of the things that got us this wonderful recognition.
Thank you. It's definitely a team effort. It's not just me. It's the administration and the support from the families and the faculty and everybody here in this building. So I definitely like to recognize that. So Let's Move Active Schools is an organization that believes in promoting at least 60 minutes of physical activity for students and families as part of Michelle Obama's Let's Move Initiative. And they recognize that studies show that active kids do better in school. They tend to have better grades, they have better attendance, they have better cognitive performance and memory, and they have better behavior. So they promote this idea, and they offer tools for schools to do that. They were, the recognition awards were given to schools that showed integration of physical activity before, during, and after the school day. So I completed the application, and there were five areas that we were evaluated in. Physical education, and they were looking for a standards-based quality program. Physical activity before and after school. And we achieved that by having our Healthy Kids Program before and after school. They have access to the gymnasium, and they are housed here, and they do a lot of activity with the students. Physical activity during the school outside of PE and recess, and we achieved that with our Healthy Highway Program, our Feel Up to Play 60 Program, Fitness Fridays, classroom activity breaks, Jumper Up for Heart, Project Daces, and other special events that we do. Staff involvement, having the staff model and be a part of our activities and do things in the classroom with the students to model those healthy choices. And then family and community engagement. And we achieved that by our promotion of community activities, whether it's Hyde Park Soccer League or different activities going on on the trails here in Hyde Park, Family Fitness Nights, and our Fitness Calendar Program. So, once the application was completed, we were then offered the recognition and received the wonderful banner. So, thank you to everyone for the support.
And I will just add that my favorite faculty, staff, student activity that we do at North Park is somewhere in that last week of school in June, is we do a victory lap to celebrate the year's efforts. And a victory lap involves having the entire student body line up outside, and we do one lap around the building with me in the front and Mrs. Roble in the back, and the kids know they can't get ahead of me or behind Mrs. Roble. And that way, we can be assured to get everybody around the school without anybody jumping in the creek on the way. So, that's always a fun experience. So thank you, and thank you for that recognition. I want to welcome everyone here tonight. I'm so glad that there's so many members of the community here, and welcome to the board here to North Park. Before I forget, I just want to acknowledge what a great gift it is to receive those dictionaries. The third-grade students are, year after year, so excited to have their own personal dictionary. It feels really special to them, and I have students who are still using them in fifth grade and beyond. So, thank you so much for everything you do to make that possible. Oh, and also, before I go to the slideshow, just a quick update on our gym floor. We, if you have time after we're done this evening, please feel free to go down and take a look. We did have the floor repaired after a long concern with a very large unwieldy bump in the middle of our gym floor. It's been repaired. Good news is that when the floor was opened up, all the things that we worried about, about what may have caused it to happen, was there environmental issues, were there moisture issues? It turns out that almost all of the issues involved were related to how it was installed initially. So it was able to be fixed. There were things that were trimmed off and loosened up and made room for the natural moisture growth and movement of those boards. I learned an awful lot about floors that I won't bore you with tonight, but I learned a lot. And in addition to the work that was done by the firm that repaired the floors, we did have someone come in and just do an air quality test through BOSI's. And as it turned out that, you know, in the gym, in the area around the gym, even under the, you know, in the floor area, the, it was no different, the air quality was no different than it was outside on that same day. So there was nothing for us to be especially concerned about. Okay, so moving into the presentation. Does that count, does all that count towards my 10 minutes, or?
No.
Okay. Oh, Doug, you should have answered that. Sorry.
Should have what? I'm sorry?
I said I should have let you answer that one. So, rather than give you all the numbers about exactly what our assessment data looks like, I'm just going to spend a minute or so talking about what we've learned as a result of the state results, state test scores that we received over the summer, as well as the data analysis, data we've been gathering on our own. One thing that we noticed is that our state test results were quite similar to our results from the year before. Slightly higher proficiency in math, but for the most part, it was pretty consistent. What was remarkably consistent was the cohort data. So when we looked at the percentage of students, for example, in third grade from the year before last, and then how they did as fourth graders, or fourth grade to fifth grade, it was almost, the numbers were almost identical. So where that's important is if you look at our fifth-grade results, for example, it looks like there was a big drop from the year before to last year, but it's actually almost the same results when, for when those students were fourth graders. So, it's not good news. You know, we don't, we don't want it to be the same. We want to continue to grow and close that gap and increase the percentage of our kids who are proficient. But it was just interesting to note how similar the data was from one year to the next. As we've done some of our initial item analysis, looking at the information that we've gotten back on the items that we've been allowed to see and how our students did, we did see a relative strength in items having to do with vocabulary. And vocabulary was a big focus last year for us. So I was glad to see that there was a little bit of a trend there. It's hard to know until we see it over a couple, three years, but it was good to see that what we've been working on is showing somewhere. And our big celebration at the end of the year last year was that we had 10% more students who were at Benchmark using our Fountas and Pennell results from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. There was a 10% increase. So that was good to see, and that's directly related to the work that we've been doing in guided reading. So our next steps, this year, we're working hard to continue to implement the ELA modules for grades 3, 5. Last year, we all did the first module of the year, but these are modules that are curriculum components that are coming down from New York State that we've adopted. So, the K-2, Listening and Speaking domains are brand-new to us this year. And in North Park, this is the first year that we're doing the Colkins Units of Study Writing Program. So those three areas are an area focused to try to improve our literacy. In math, we're continuing the work that we began last year with the math modules from New York State. We have provided teachers with more materials to support those modules, and we have teacher-led study groups, one-on-bar modeling that's happening as we speak. We've also taken on data teamwork, which I don't know if, I'm not sure...
Not much.
Not much. Okay, so little tiny bits. So, as a district, this is not just North Park, but as a district, we've, we're working on creating data teams at a variety of levels, but we've started with grade levels within buildings to do more in-depth data analysis following a very specific in-depth protocol. We had our first experience working with this protocol on our first half-day that we had early release not too long ago. It was a great experience for teachers to have the opportunity to dig deeply into their data and work as a collaborative team. It was really about problem-solving as a group and sharing the experience and strength of individual teachers as they worked collectively. So I'm very optimistic that this will take us in a much quicker direction that we're trying to head. I had, after the very first day that we had training on the model, a teacher spoke to me the next day and said that he really felt like he had hope that we were, as hard as we're working, that this will help give us a more focused direction, and that we'll start to see the outcomes that we're all hoping to achieve. Our BLT is doing quite well. We have a good, robust team. We have five parents and five staff members who are part of the BLT. We created last year a two-year plan, so we're in year two of that plan. Our first year was really just, we were starting from scratch, we were creating a brand-new team. So we spent a lot of time... So, we spent a lot of time studying the available data that we had about our school based on surveys and test results and a variety of things. We did some study group ourselves with Parent Engagement, a book about parent engagement, to get a sense of where we wanted to go. And then, towards the end of last year, we created a concrete plan for this year that includes, that's focusing on increasing student engagement. And one of the things that we learned about increasing student engagement is that when parents are engaged, it helps keep students engaged. So, our first activity for this year is taking place on November 3rd. Yes, here's a plug. We're doing a Common Core Expo for parents. It's set up, we have a number of teachers who will be here who volunteered. It's set up for parents to come and experience a lesson that their child would receive. So, there are lessons being offered in reading, writing, and math at a variety of grade levels. And parents that come will have a chance to experience three different lessons they can choose from the menu. Childcare is provided, 6:30 to 8:00 on Monday, November 3rd. So, we're hoping to have a good turnout for that. In addition to that, we're planning this year on setting up, starting slow with a buddy program, matching students in the older grades with the younger grades for some very specific activities, and hoping that that will benefit both students, the older students and the younger students. We've certainly seen that on small scale where we've done that, and we're hoping to move in a direction of having that be more of a part of our culture, the way that our Healthy Highways has become. We want to really move in the direction of giving kids a sense of purpose by buddying them up with somebody else. You've heard me speak frequently about the Healthy Highways Character Ed program that's not just character ed, it's nutrition ed and exercise, fitness education. So, we're just adding a couple of elements. This year, each year, we add something new. So, this year, we've added the idea of having students become bus driver of the week, where their bus is their cafeteria table, and they become responsible for, when the students come in, making sure the table is clean before the students sit down, notifying somebody if there's a problem, and then after everybody leaves. So, trying to have kids take more ownership for keeping the area neat and clean. We've also introduced something called the four-step apology, which I've been really excited about. It's been very effective, in my estimation, with kids. As you see up there, they apologize very specifically for what they've done. "I'm sorry for..." "It was wrong because..." And it's not, "It was wrong because I got in trouble." "It was wrong because of how did it impact the person that I'm apologizing to? Next time I will..." And again, we have a lot of work to do because everybody says, "Next time I will." Not do it again. So, we're working on, what would the replacement be? What would you do instead to get the same thing? And then, the last one is, and this is where I underestimated how powerful this last one would be. They need to make eye contact with the person that they're apologizing to and ask for forgiveness. And I have found it to be moving for the child that's asking and empowering for the child that's receiving the apology. So, it's something that we're trying to do across the building, so we're all using the same language. And I'm optimistic that this is going to help with all of the other efforts that we're making towards anti-bullying. Some of those activities you'll see are familiar. They're things that we do do year to year. Our Promising Pals was a huge success last year. We had almost 100 pals and students. Family Fitness Night is a night for parents to bring their kids and come and participate in activities together. We continue to do winter workshops. Last year, we had an Artist in Residency program, the Circus Project. It was the second time we had done it in several years. We're doing it again this year, so we're really excited about the opportunity to do it a couple of years in a row. So many PTA events. And one that I would like to highlight tonight was, happened just a few weeks ago. We had an author named Renee Telgemeyer, who is a very popular author of books that our kids take out from the library, was coming. And she doesn't charge to come and do an assembly with the students, but she does ask that we sell the books, that we send notices home to parents and try to sell 100 books, is what she asks for. And our PTA decided this year that instead of doing that, where they would normally pay for an assembly, they instead bought the books. So, they bought 250 books, one for every child in grades 3, 4, and 5. And Renee actually autographed all 250 of them. So, every child left here with an autographed book. And I do have some pictures, if you happen to notice them, up in the lobby of kids who were in the rooms that afternoon, reading the book with, you know, just so much pride and enthusiasm. And we have another author coming in January, and the PTA will purchase books for students in kindergarten, first, and second grade for that assembly. So, every child will get a book purchased from the PTA. And that's through all of their fundraising efforts that they're able to do that. I'm also really proud that our students participate in a number of community events, charity events. They raised, students raised $2,000 last year for UNICEF. We're going to do that again this year. We do Stuff the Bus, which is an initiative from our Transportation Department. We participate in non-perishable food items around the holidays. And you may know it as the Brotherhood Pageant, but this year, we are the Pageant for Peace. And we are going to continue with collecting goods and food for our own families right here at North Park. And then, just quickly, I already mentioned some of the parent involvement through the PTA. Those are, you can see up there, the, I'll just mention the grade-level grants. That's, each grade level receives $400 from the PTA to use in a way that benefits all the children at the grade level. Some of the ways that that has been used in the past and are being used this year is we, our fourth graders have a presentation from Dick Albert, who is our History on Wheels gentleman. He was here today, as a matter of fact. He brings costumes for the kids. He really gives them an experience of what it's like to live, what it was like to live in colonial times. And our Pond Project is in third grade. That's through the Mohawk Preserve, where they come and set up a pond in the classroom in the spring, using a fish tank, but a pond environment. And the kids get to study what could be found right outside our own door here. And they learn not only about the animals that live in the pond, but they learn about the importance of maintaining the ecosystem. And while it's not up there, we also joined with the high school a couple of weeks ago to add to our Trees for Tribes. So, it's a project that's designed to create a greater buffer zone between here and the creek. So, we did another planting of, I believe it was 35 trees and about 150 shrubs out in the front yard there. And that's it. So, if anybody have any questions?
Any question?
Great.
I just have a comment. Wow. A lot of great stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're proud of what we do here, so thank you.
Nobody else? Okay. We're now going to move to 6.4, Veterans Tax Exemption. Mr. Kurlander is going to give us a recap of information needed for this year. And then, we're going to have public participation where you can speak on the subject if you like, or any other subject. And then, we're going to have a board discussion following that on the Veterans Tax Exemption.
Okay. So, many of you might remember that this is not brand-new. Last year, in February, late January, February, the news came out that there was an alternative Veterans Tax Exemption that had to be approved by March 1st. Most of the board were informed about this, and we distributed lots of information to the board about what needed to happen. And we felt that it was a very short period of time. We put out facts on it, and we promised the community that we would come back to it. So, here we are, a little less than four or five months later, coming back to talk about what the alternative veteran tax exemption is, what it means to the community, and give out facts about what that might do or have an effect on Hyde Park. Just important to understand that none of this is anybody's opinion either way. This evening, it's just the facts. So, again, there was a change in the law. Typically, before this law became in effect, it was just county and towns that were able to give the alternative veterans' tax credit. Now, that includes school districts. And part of the board's responsibility with regards to putting this together is to pick a funding stream, which we'll get into, of how we fund the alternative tax credit, or how much do we do? This is basically where we are. But it enables eligible veterans to receive a partial exemption from their school tax levies through their assessed values on their properties. And again, that's the law of 2013, Chapter 518. The deadline, the deadline for last year was March 1st. The deadline for this year is March 1st, but 2015. The board's decision is to offer an exemption for 15, 16, and what rate of exemption? Important to understand that we can adopt the default, which will make sense in just a slide or two. If we're going to go up or down from the default, we need to have two resolutions and two public hearings. So, if we're going to go with a lower exemption, we have to have two. If we're going to go with a higher exemption than the default, we have to have two separate resolutions on the board agenda and two separate hearings for that. If we go with the default, it's just one. And that'll make sense in the next couple of slides. What's important about the alternative veterans' tax credit is there's no funding stream. There's no federal grants, monies, state monies, anything that comes to us from the school district to pay for this. And where does it come from? It comes from the pockets of the folks that live in and around us. It's really other Hyde Park community members that will pick up the tab for these non-veteran tax exemptions from assessed values. I promised that I would talk about the minimum, default, and maximum. As you can see, the default veterans' exemption is where people start typically. And what that means is if a soldier was enlisted during wartime, you'll see across the chart, for a default veterans' exemption, you would automatically get $12,000 subtracted from your assessed value, from your assessed value of your home. On the minimum veterans' exemption, the least that the district can do is a $6,000. So, you go 6, 12, and then all the way up to the maximum exemption that we could choose to go with, which is $54,000. This kind of stacks itself, and you'll see in the next slide how that happens. So, the next level, or column, I should say, row, is combat zone. And that adds an additional. So, if a soldier was on a combat zone during wartime, you add the $12,000 plus the $8,000, which now brings you to $20,000. So, you would have a $20,000 reduction from your assessed value, having been in the combat zone during wartime. And the same goes for the minimum and the max. And you can see, you would add those two numbers together. On the third piece, if you were sustained a disability on a combat zone during wartime, you add all three together. And there's a little bit of a formula on how the disability is figured out for all three, and I'll go through that in just a second. But as you can see, 6, 4, and 20 would give you a maximum of $30,000, or your equalized full property value of $40,000 divided by 2, which is that formula, which gives you the $20,000 for the disability. So, you have the 6, the 4, and the 20. On the default veterans, it's very similar. You have the 12, the 8, and the 40. And then, on the maximum end, you have 54, 36, and 180. And as you see, in each of the equalized full property values, it's the lesser of the two. So, if a veteran qualifies for multiple categories, the exemption is added together up to the maximum that that person deserves. One of the things, questions that have gotten quite a bit, phone calls and so on and so forth, is if I'm already getting the veterans' assessment from the county and the town, do I have to re-sign up? And the answer is no. Once you're in the system, if this Board of Education decides to move forward with a decision, you will automatically be put in that pool of folks that will have that reduction from the county, from your school taxes. This presentation utilizes all of the 14, 15 current data with regards to assessed values, tax rates, our equalization rates, and the number of registered vets in our towns. The numbers in this report can change. What's been noticed around the state is as the school districts have decided to make decisions to allow for the alternative veterans' tax credit, more people get out there and sign up. So, you could see a lot of folks maybe, you know, learning, "Okay, I need to get out there and really sign up for this so that I'm getting my maximum benefit like everybody else." So, it's important to understand that after we adopt the two resolutions and we have the hearings, we can only increase the exemptions. That's the important thing. So, if we started at the max, we could never go down. If we started at the minimum, we could go up. But, you know, at the default, you could not move that number down. If we decide and land at the default, which is 12, 8, and 40, we would not be able to go down from there. We'd only be able to go up. So, the scenario, I want to talk a little bit about some facts that might be interesting. The county, I asked them, they're very helpful, by the way. And I wanted to find out, like, well, you know, what are the other towns doing? Because right now, it's a town thing. So, the town of Hyde Park, town of Clinton, town of Pleasant Valley, town of Rhinebeck are all doing this now. And I wanted to find out what kind of structure they voted on in their boards. And the town of Clinton did the default. The town of Hyde Park did a minimum. Pleasant Valley did a higher than the default, not the maximum, but somewhere in between. It was a 27, 45, 90. The town of Poughkeepsie went to the maximum, to the 54, 90, 180. And when I spoke to the woman on the phone, she warned me very clearly that, you know, once you go to the highest, you cannot move your way back down. So, they're struggling a little bit there in the town of Poughkeepsie, as the woman told me. And then, in Rhinebeck, again, wasn't the default, but it was a little bit higher, and that was a 27, 45, 90. And then, Duchess County altogether, overall, so for Duchess County, 27, 45, 90 was the numbers that were chosen. So, what does that mean? From this point in time, I had to figure out, well, how many veterans are out there? So, they provided me information with regards to the number of exemptions per town. So, for example, in Clinton, we had 87 veterans. Forty, 43 wartime, 37 that were in combat, and seven that had a disability. Pleasant Valley, excuse me, Hyde Park, being 63% of our tax levy, certainly going to be the largest of the numbers, there's 460 veterans that were in wartime. Of those, 399 were in combat, and 92 have a disability. Pleasant Valley, there are 17 in wartime, of which 15 were in combat and one had a disability. Poughkeepsie, there was 128 in wartime, 100 in combat zone, and 21 disabled. And in Rhinebeck, there were two wartime and one combat with no disabilities. So, this slide becomes important now because this is how the county described to me the best way to talk to the community about, what does this really mean to the taxpayers? What does it mean with regards to the exemptions that are already there and the exemptions that are going to be added to? So, right now, Hyde Park is a very highly exempted area with the state lands, the federal lands that we have, the parks and recreation, they're all exempt. So, right now, we have 40%, more than 40%, 40.41% of the land in Hyde Park is exempt from taxes completely. We do get a little bit of money from the federal government, which is called Impact Aid, but it's like pennies on the dollar with regards to what we should be getting for that land. So, the dollar values that you see in the second column, $1,407,000 is the dollar amount of exempt lands. So, 40.41% or 1.4 million dollars, billion dollars, excuse me, of land that is exempted from, without doing anything, as we stand right now. So, there's no shift in assessed value. The next level goes to, okay, so what if we went to the default? And the default is where a lot of places find themselves going to. It's one hearing, not two. But exemptions with the default, alt-exempt, move our 40.41% up almost to 41%. And as you can see, moves that 1.407 up to 1.425. So, that's adding 18 million, or shifting 18,123,000 from the pockets of veterans to the, you know, it's shifting it around from, you know, community member to community member. It's being shifted from one place to the next. And then, the minimum, as you can see, is a little bit less, and that wound up being 9,553. That's the scenario. That's the impact. That's what would happen. That's what would happen to Hyde Park if we moved forward. You can see, we are a highly exempted area to begin with. Not that has any decision, but I think it's important to note that we are, do have a lot of exempt land to begin with. And it's a, it's a conversation for the Board to have. And the last thing that, that there is, is there's a Gold Star parent thing that we can also decide to at the same time. It's 458A of the law, and this represents an additional benefit. You can choose to offer, to allow a parent whose child has passed away in the line of duty during a war to receive the exemption the veteran would have received. So, so even though the person's not there anymore, we would allow the parents of those folks that suffered from that, receive that benefit.
Does anybody have any questions on the facts? I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna discuss merits in the, in the discussion period, but do you have the facts?
Yes, I have a question.
Okay.
Wayne, what's the total taxable assessed value for this school district?
I have it at my table there. I can give it to you very quickly. It, it's quite high.
Okay.
Do you want me to grab it quick?
If it's 40%, can we assume that it's 3 billion? If, if, because I always thought it was something like 9, 9 billion, to tell you the truth.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. If that's, this is, you're just adding, you're adding another 60% on this number. So it's 3 billion.
Right, 3 billion. And I think that's where, Steve, you were going, you wanted to know what the percentage. With 18 million, it's about like 0.006, if I, math is figuring it in my head there.
Well, what I want to understand is how is this gonna shift the burden if we approve it?
Okay.
How's it gonna shift it?
Right.
Well, right now, the assessed value sits on those properties of the veterans. Once they put, once you voted to have this alternative exemption, it's taken right off of their tax bill. Okay? And it has to go somewhere, because the tax levy has to be met. So it's, it's just gonna be spread out amongst everybody else that's not a veteran.
Okay. I understand that. My point is, or the question on the table is, what is the amount going to? What, what's the maximum possible amount that could be shifted to the rest of the population? In other words, if every veteran takes full, full...
We don't know, because there, there could be veterans out there that are not signed up for...
That's beside the point. What I want to understand is what's the worst case?
The worst case would have to include me knowing, right now, those numbers are people that are signed up either with the county or the town.
At the moment, it's 18 million, right?
Right. So it's 18, 18 million dollars would be shifted.
Eighteen million. And my calculation, that would increase, that, that's 0.006 of the total population. So it's not a big, it's not a big number. But I'll leave, I'll leave the math to somebody else, but...
So the shift to assessed value is only 18 million? So what was the dollar value in that chart, the 1.42 billion?
That's, that's the total exemptions altogether. In other words, that's the 40% plus the exempt, plus the new exemption. Shows you...
If you took 40% of 1.4, that's where I got the 3 billion from. And then took the 18 million over the 3 billion, and that's where my math came from.
So the worst case could be 1.43 billion dollars?
No, no, the worst case is, if I'm doing it right, point, the increase to any individual would be in the, in the hundreds, the thousands, rather, 0.006, I think. So it, it's not a big, it's not a, it's big a number. If you look at the 18 million, it's a lot different than looking at the, the percentage that is of the total.
So if you had a house with an assessed value of the average in...
250.
215?
That average, 250.
What kind of impact would, would that have if we say we took the default?
That's how they did it last year, and they chose not to do it this year because it was unfair. I still could run the numbers that way. It's just, it's, it's just unfair because everybody has such a unique situation. And it, like, you know, what, what your assessed value is versus the next person, your neighbor, might be the same exact house but have different assessed values based on whatever circumstances there are. So they felt it was unfair to, to make that assumption. So I struggled with, with doing that or not doing that. I say, because that's what people want to know, what's it gonna cost me?
It seems to me, you just take the percentage of what, at least that is, of the whole, and give it a equal distribution to all taxpayers based on that thing. And it should go up 0.006, as far as I can see.
I wonder how you can spread out equally when you have different property values.
I'm just saying in general. I'm not saying, I'm just leveling the whole thing. This, this just, there's a, the total district's tax levy is X. And if I read that right, X minus the, the 18 million, it's 18 million is, will be taken off, out of the total. And if the total's 3 billion and you subtract 18 million from it, that's the percentage that'll be reduced from...
Other people's.
The overall tax structure. I'm not talking about individual. Individual ones are gonna be different. Yeah, I know that. I'm just saying, in general, how much is it? And it's not a big number. That's what I'm just saying.
Steve, the answer to your question, you had asked, what are the total taxable assessed values for all of Hyde Park? So out of, for our five towns, it's 1,866,891,479. That's prior to any equalized...
Well, then your, then your first, your first slide can't be right. You said 40% was 1.4 billion.
That, that's the piece that we're not taxing.
It's 40% of the total, right?
Total, yeah. Doesn't count star, yeah.
If you divide that by 40%, it comes out to 3, 3 billion. So it can't be 1.8 billion.
It's 1.8 plus the 1.4 is the total.
Oh, you're saying it's 1.8 plus the 1.4?
Yes.
Then it comes out to 3, okay. It's still 3, it's still the total amount.
Yes. Then you have star, which comes across as a... All right, so that's...
Let me make sure that I got that number right.
0.01.
The total assessed value is 1.87 billion dollars.
Right.
And out of that, the chart that you showed, lifted assessed value of either 18.1 million or 9.6 million.
In the, in the, the default...
You need to go to the mic.
To the default situation, you'll see the 18 million will be shifted out of the non-exempt to now exempt. Right now, we have 1.407. Without any alternative veterans tax thing going on, we are at 1,407. If we add the default, we add 18,123,000 out of the veterans' tax bills and on to displaced to other community members.
Let me, let me ask the question, because I'm starting to, mine's, wheels are turning here. So the tax rate, you know, the, for most towns, it was $22. It was, Hyde Park was $36 per thousand of assessed value. That's calculated based on the assessed value, correct? Okay, so if you take off $18 million of assessed value across all the communities, then effectively, doesn't that tax rate go up per thousand? So, so now, the good news for a veteran is that the assessed value of his property, some of it becomes exempt so that there's less to, you know, less of those thousands to multiply 22 or 36 to. But effectively, they almost pay for it too, because that, that 22 or 36 now goes up for everybody, some by some amount, because it has to, it's, it's now calculated a different number because you've got exempt property. Follow what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yes.
So it's almost like everybody pays for it a little bit, in the, in the per thousand, the assessed, or the, the tax rate, if you work per thousand.
If you look at it from that perspective, yeah.
Right. So I never, I didn't really think about that before. It's kind of interesting. In other words, everybody kind of pays for it. It's, it's, yeah, it's, hmm, interesting. You're just, you know, you're trying to get your head around this and understand, because you're not really, you know, I, I get, you know, yeah, the cost effectively might be shifted, but you're not really, you know, that 18 million dollars, using the middle example, the default, that 18 million dollars of assessed value really doesn't get, that, that doesn't get shifted somewhere else. It just goes away. It's almost becomes like, it's almost like we bundle them all up and it becomes another federal property that can't be taxed. It's, it's not that we, you know, not my assessed value of my house doesn't go up because of that 18 million dollars.
Kevin, the number of assessed value dollars still have to make up the same tax levy.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So, but, but don't say it shifts, because it doesn't really go anywhere. It just disappears. The, the overall assessed value of, of properties has now been decreased by 18 million dollars. So consequently, when you go to calculate the tax rate per thousand, that goes up. So now, the good news, for everybody, but the good news for the veteran is that, that's, that whatever it goes up gets multiplied by something, because his assessed value has dropped, or her, there could be absolutely women involved, goes, has, gets dropped. And so their, their assessed value is down, but it's multiplied by a higher rate. They, they probably make out okay. And then it's, it's the people that are not veterans are, it's the same assessed value multiplied by some tax rate per thousand, you know, 22 or 36 dollars where we are now, something above that, but we don't know how much. It could be cents per, it could be dollars per, but that we don't have right now. But, but, okay, I just, you know, I just, now that I got thinking about it, I realize what will happen to the tax rate. So in, in effect, you know, kind of everybody pays for it a little bit, you know, because the tax, the effective tax rate goes up by some amount. Could be a penny, it could be a tenth of a penny, whatever it is, but it goes up for everybody.
Right.
Okay, and again, I'm just, I'm thinking out loud. I'm not making any opinion about this. I'm just trying to make sure I understand, you know, the implications of it, so...
So Wayne, the percent of exemptions column there, you're saying that we, our current situation is 40.41% of Hyde Park land is exempt. The next column, I misunderstood initially, but now read it as if we accept the default or pass the default exemption, then an additional 0.5% rounding to even numbers would be exempt. And if we took the minimum, it would be 0.3%.
I'd almost like to, and you'll have to do this town by town, but your calculation of tax rates, I'm looking at a spreadsheet, nobody else can see. That's why I'm looking at this computer over here. I'd almost like to have, I'd have to see, you know, if we, you know, did this this year, for example. I'd like to see, you know, assuming that all the veterans that we are currently registered and are quote unquote known, so that if we were to implement this, that's, that's the group at minimum you'd be dealing with. Certainly more people could apply. But at least you have, you have a minimum. You know where they are and where their properties are. You could, you know, if, if we're aware of some folks through the county, that we could kind of like take their tax bills and, and obviously names would be left out, but, and I don't know if you even share it publicly. What I would do is, I'd like to see, like, to take the 18 million dollars out of assessed value, recalculate what the tax rate would be. Now, I know that what that would do to my bill and what, you know, or then I would be able to see what it would do to my bill and other bills, you know, other average assessed values who are not veterans. And then also, you know, certainly the benefit it would provide a veteran. What would it do to a typical veterans' bill? And, you know, you know, I, I just, I want to have an understanding of that, because I just don't have that, you know? And, you know, I've said it before, you know, because, you know, I, I'm in a position where I can maybe perhaps do more than anybody else that I represent, perhaps, and maybe not. But, you know, but if you, you know, just as a general rule of thumb, if you told me, and this is just me thinking out loud, if you told me it had a hundred dollar impact to my tax bill, I have no problem with it. If you told me it was a thousand dollars, that's a problem, you know? And then, and to the average, you know, I need to know what it does to everybody's tax bill, because there's something we can all, you know, swallow and sacrifice for, for these folks who have certainly made a great sacrifice. But there are, there's a financial limit to that. And I'm not, I'm not even implying that it could be ridiculously high, but nobody has given me a number to even say what it could be. You know, because if it's me reaching into my pocket for, for $20 more every year, sign me up now. If it's $50, yeah, still sign me up. If it's $500, $1,000, I gotta think a little bit about that, as I have to think about everybody I represent that could be impacted by that. What kind of money are we talking about for the average citizen?
If we took it as a pure average?
Well, yeah, I guess so, or just some, a kind of a sampling, you know? But it's just, it's really hard to envision what this would do, because if it's pennies, what are we even talking about? And if it's thousands of dollars, oh my God. I mean, but nobody can, nobody can point me in a, in a direction that, what does, you know, that means nothing to me. Moving 18 million dollars of assessed value off the tax rolls, what I do know is it will drive the tax per thousand rate up. I do know that. But I, and then if I knew what that number was, I could put, apply that to my own tax bill and see what would happen. And, you know, you could pick a veterans' bill and, and recognize it now, he'll, he or she would have an exemption, apply it to their bill and say, okay, there's the benefit they got. But without any of these examples, nobody really knows what this, what this does, you know? And it's, it's important to have that, I think.
Okay.
I don't want to get into discussion too much now, but...
No, no, but I'm just saying, I mean, this, this really doesn't say a lot. This is a really nice thing to do, but at what cost? Nobody knows, you know? That's, and I, we meant, we talked about this last spring, and I was kind of hoping to see this type of analysis. And quite frankly, we don't have it. All I see is that 18 million dollars of assessed value becomes exempt. That's all I see. Doesn't tell me anything.
Which, which is 0.001% of the total. If it's 1.8 billion, that, that's only 0.001%. Now, I would assume that everybody else's would go up that much.
Which would be, which would be fine, because it's like 30 bucks on, on a $5,000 tax bill. So, you know, but nobody, I just, somebody needs to...
I, I understand, absolutely.
You know, you need to show me, you know? So, yeah, I just need to see it.
All right, is there any other questions on the facts themselves? Good, I'd like to move to public participation if I could.
The only, I guess the only statement I have about the facts is that I don't, I, I agree with Mr. Sheehan that we don't have the essential fact. And that is, what is the shift gonna be? What is the change in the tax, uh, tax rate gonna be? And until we have that, I would like to table the discussion that is scheduled for later in this, this agenda. There's no point discussing it until I have a firm grasp on that.
Does that leave us with the timeline?
It hurts us on the timeline.
The good news is, at least we're doing this...
You can, you can make that motion.
No, I mean, but, right, we'll talk about it then. But the good news is, it's October and it's not March like it was last year, where it's like we had no time to look at it. I've kind of said what I want to see done for analysis. I hope everybody else agrees, so then it's really easy to make a decision.
I think there's still some benefit to discussing it a little bit further in terms of what people's feelings are, in terms of which scenario, why, what do you think? So just, and I agree, you know, without knowing exactly how much it, it, it costs, it makes it difficult to make a decision tonight. But I don't want to make a decision tonight. I want to make a decision at the November meeting, where we have a, I'm planning to have a public hearing before the next Board meeting, so that we can do the legal requirements. So that we, if we do have enough information to vote, we can vote that day, because we have to, we have to move on. We have to move. There's only one November, possibly two, but right now, there's only one. There's only one in December. So we, we need to get the information, and we need to make a decision. That would be my only, my only thoughts on that, so...
Okay, so I appreciate the fact that you're looking forward and tracking the process and the timeline. It sounds like you're tracking a timeline where we would be able to make a decision in November.
Yes.
Okay. Why November? Why not January? Just as an, an example.
Let's just say I would rather do things sooner than later. There's always things that can come up. But other than that, no, I, I have, as long as we can file whatever we decide by March 1st. assuming there's no, you know, other concerns, tabling the motion, whatever.
Well, I'm content-
I guess, I guess I'm okay with that, but I would prefer to get it done.
Well, I'm content to discuss this after public participation.
Okay. Wayne, thank you, Wayne.
Yep, thanks.
Okay. At this point, we're at the public participation. I'd remind everybody that if you, we'd appreciate it if you keep it to three minutes and that you'd be respectful of other people's time as well. And of course, any other topic that wishes to be, anybody wants to discuss, of course, is also fair game. So at this time, may I have a motion for public participation, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? We are now in public participation. If anybody would like to address the board, please step to the microphone.
I'm Mike Athanas, I'm commander of the Hyde Park American Legion. I'd like to greet the Board of Education, allow us to speak on this matter. I represent senior veterans through our local post and all the American Legion posts across the county. There are many senior veterans, that some of them are World War II veterans that have disabilities. And these folks are, they, they worked prior to the increase of cost of living that we are involved with right now. And they're, they're very limited, the amount of monies that they have to spend. They don't have large income retirements. And so these fellows were in Korea in World War II. I'm a Vietnam vet and I, I would like to ask that the board at least condone the default value. I know the maximum value, since we don't know what the rates are going to be, it's, it's hard to make a decision. I, I condone that you want to table the matter and, and get more information. That seems like a reasonable path to follow. So I thank you for talking about this tonight and allowing a further investigation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Athanas.
Pardon?
I said, "Thank you, Mr. Athanas."
And thank you for your service.
Good evening, my name is Bob Kampf. I'm at Eight Putnam Road here in Hyde Park. Some of you know who I am, I've been around a little bit in town. I'm here representing myself tonight as a non-veteran in support of this motion or this amendment to change the exemption. I'm also here because the county legislator of this area, Mr. Richard Perkins, was unable to be here tonight. He had another prior engagement, which was doing, having bypass surgery at Vasa Hospital last week. He's laid up, he was not able to be here, but he called and asked if I would read a little comment from him in support of the exemption. He said in very simple terms, "I support a tax exemption for veterans. I believe this is an opportunity for our community to show our appreciation for the sacrifices our veterans have made for us. Please move this forward, move this exemption forward." Thank you. Very basic comment. And most of you know who Mr. Perkins is. He represents District Seven here in Hyde Park in the county legislature. And as I listened to the comments tonight and I came tonight to support what he asked me to present for him and for myself as a senior citizen and as a non-veteran, I think this can be done. I agree with Mr. Athanas that probably you should start with the default area if you're going to start someplace. There are, as I know from being on town board for ten years, on the school board for five years, and doing several other things, that there are seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-one parcels of land taxable in Hyde Park. There are nine hundred and twenty veterans. That means six thousand, almost nine hundred properties would share more of a tax burden than the veterans would. But I think Mr. Sheehan hit the nail on the head. You need to know your numbers. I'm glad you're taking the time to do that. I hope that you will go forward, like they said here in North Park, let's move, let's help the veterans. They're going to need it the way the world is right now and the way it's going to be for the next couple of years. And I'd like to see them get some kind of an exemption. It'll probably, if you look at the numbers later on, you're going to find out it's going to cost everybody about fifteen dollars a month. I think we can live with that. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board.
My name is Gregory Wilkins. I'm a combat decorated U.S. Marine, served in Iraq. And I have some of the answers that you may have, that you may need, Mr. Sheehan, if I could approach the board and, and give you those pieces of paper.
Sure, thank you.
I don't have enough for everybody.
We'll, we'll pass them to the clerk and she'll make sure she gets them around to us. Thank you.
And, uh, right there, those figures are from, from the property taxes. If, if, if we qualify for all three, disability, wartime, and combat, which I'm sure not everybody qualifies for, but that's what it basically would go up for, about fourteen dollars and seventy-five cents a month at the, the maximum. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your service.
This isn't a no-brainer. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for the opportunity to address you. My name is Ed Forrest. I'm a Vietnam veteran who is honored to have had the privilege to serve you and my fellow countrymen in the United States Army. I'm also a homeowner here in Hyde Park and a former substitute teacher in this district. In regards to the alternative veteran school tax exemption, you need to do the right thing. That's why I respectfully urge members of the school board to courageously stand up without forestalling, hesitation, evasion, or politicking, and unanimously do the right thing and immediately pass this benefit. It's a no-brainer. It is ironic that when we are serving our country, whether in war during such conflicts as World War II, Korea, Vietnam, Iraq, or Afghanistan, or if we serve during times of peace, we're considered heroes and receive the highest degrees of support and respect from most of our elected officials and virtually all of our countrymen. Yet when we return to civilian life, when the opportunity arises for a grateful nation and/or community to continue to honor those who have paid and sacrificed the most for our communities and nation, many, but obviously not all, of those elected officials and individuals now consider us tax burdens or budget burdens. We are not tax burdens or budget burdens. We are a minority group who pay now and will continue to pay school taxes. We only ask for what I'm sure you will agree is a well-deserved modest token of partial tax relief. You do the right thing. But unfortunately, I am sure some are going to argue against this relief. Their arguments are many. You can't afford it, we'll have to adjust our budgets. What about those who did not rise to the call of duty, the veterans didn't? What are they going to say? Yet in this community, again, ironically, the community that gave us Franklin D. Roosevelt, a man who never hesitated or questioned support for veterans, or put a price on what it may cost for you to deny the veterans of this community a maximum benefit would be nothing short of a disgrace. We taxpaying veterans have always helped give you what you wanted. Football fields, computers, buses, most recently a three million dollar bond for needed infrastructure repairs. Regardless of what you've asked us, this Board of Education, this community should remember, without the brave, unselfish individuals, those men and women who have sacrificed so much and whose families and loved ones have endured such hardships and pain, there would be no Board of Education or school district as we know it today. You must do the right thing and pass the maximum veterans' tax benefit. Yet there are others who are going to hesitate, delay, or politic over this issue. Some people are going to say, what about the other heroes of today? The police, the firemen, teachers, lifeguards, or those who serve who are not veterans of the armed forces? Shouldn't they receive the same? Let me remind those folks that the American soldier has a unique responsibility of being on duty twenty-four seven in some of the most inhospitable locations around the world without benefit of the security of laying down to rest at night, hot meals, time with children and spouses, going to worship, holidays, or even sitting on a school board. Let me remind those who ask such questions about why the veterans have earned this benefit that those individuals who do not serve return home every night and sleep in warm beds, kiss their children and spouses goodnight, have a warm meal, clean clothes, and even watch a football game. Few ever see what an American soldier, sailor, airman, marine, or coast guardsman sees or endures, experiences that many of us veterans wish we could forget. I believe that this school district should emerge as part of a shining example to not only the Hyde Park community in its entirety, but to those it educates by passing this benefit without delay to demonstrate what a school board deems as an appropriate display of respect, gratitude, and recognition to those who have unselfishly sacrificed so much for their education and future. You need to do the right thing. I ask the members of this school board, who I believe there is only one veteran among you, to vote for passage of this benefit without delay. And I also ask those non-veterans who are here tonight, who may not be in favor of this benefit being granted to our nation's veterans, a simple yet poignant question. What would you have paid to avoid seeing what I, as a nineteen-year-old soldier, sailor, airman, marine, or coastman, coast guardsman, may have seen or experienced? What would you have paid to avoid the years away from home or away from your family and children for the loss of some of your freedom, or the blood, or the pain, or the tears? How much would you pay? Does it really matter? Many of my comrades and friends are here tonight in support of this tax benefit. Many are non-veterans. Many have children in this district. Many have lived here for years, all without exception. Wait for you to do the right thing and pass this benefit without excuse or delay. Again, I respectfully urge the members of this school board to courageously stand up without forestalling, hesitation, evasion, politicking, and unanimously do the right thing and immediately pass this veterans' tax benefit. Remember what we did for you at Pearl Harbor, Iwo Jima, Normandy, Korea, the jungles of Vietnam, and more recently after nine eleven in Iraq and Afghanistan. Without us, there would be no need for the school district. We did the right thing. Now we're asking you to do the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your service again.
Would anybody else like to address the board at this time?
I just came here to hear, but after hearing, listening to all this, I'm a Vietnam veteran, combat, disabled. I've lived in Hyde Park since nineteen seventy-six, put my kids through Hyde Park schools. I just want to point out also that I'm a member of Post One Seventy VFW in Poughkeepsie. We're all, we're all active in the community. We, we go out and we, we have fundraisers, we donate to different organizations, schools. In Hyde Park alone, we've had, we have programs that we've got scholarships. It's called the Patriots' Pen and the Voice of Democracy. One's for the junior high, one's for the senior high. I know a lot of the guys here are American Legion or VFW or DAV. And it's not like we stopped doing stuff. We're all active. We contribute what we can to our clubs and we're out there, like I said, doing, having fundraisers for this, to raise money, and we give it back to the community. It's not like we stopped and we're trying to live in our pa, on our past laurels of being veterans or whatever. I, I just want to make that point that we're still, we're still doing stuff. I, I go down my post every day. I have a couple other guys here, we're down here every day. We, we just had a fundraiser, we made twenty-two hundred dollars. We're, we're going to donate that to, for a service dog, for a helper dog, for disabled, not just veterans, but disabled people. And they'll decide where the, who gets the dog, that's out of our hands. But we're, it's just, it's not like we stopped. We're still here and we're still active and we're still contributing. So I just urge you to take that into consideration when you try to pass this, this bill.
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Would anybody else like to address the board? Mr. Hughes?
Good evening, Steve Hughes, District Resident. I think ultimately it comes down to Mr. Sheehan's statement that you need to know exactly what the impact is, is going to be. Kind of at a disadvantage here, but I'm doing it because I'm doing it off the top of my head. But if one point four billion dollars is the exempt value of your land, that means about two billion dollars is the taxable value. And eighteen million dollars is about one percent of that, point nine percent. To me, one percent of my tax bill, I can handle that. To quote Paul Prentis, I'm on a fixed income, but I can handle that. It's, it's a small price to pay. I think the more important number is the one percent. People are already complaining about the increase in their taxes. And if you tell them the tax burden is going up two percent and their tax bill goes up three percent, they're going to be upset with that. And you risk the support of the community at large for your budgets in the future. Just something to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Anyone else? May I have a motion to exit public participation, please?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? We're now out of discussion. Anybody want to comment now or you want to wait till we get in the discussion or? Any, any comments? I think, I think it was self-up and what people said, that I don't think they're looking for a response in particular at this time, but they, I'm sure are very interested in what we say during the discussion that follows. So we can move into the discussion phase. That would be eight point one. As I've done in the past, I'd, no, I am a veteran, I'm a disabled veteran. So say that upfront, just so you know. And I'll leave it open to the floor first and then if nobody has anything they want to say, I, I have a few things.
Well, I just, I just want to just understand the process again. If, we have to have a public hearing no matter what?
Correct.
Okay, so we do, we will, okay, so there's a public hearing regardless of which, which direction we're inclined to go. But you have to have two if you want to go less than the default or more than the default. Okay.
That's correct.
So I think, make sure I understood that. Okay. You know, the only, the only thing, as I, I said before, and, you know, I, 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 the information I asked for is stuff I had asked for back in March or said I needed to see in March. So I, I can't emphasize enough that I, I would like to see that information because I am very much inclined to grant the exemption, but it would be irresponsible to do so without seeing what I've asked for. And I can't be any more clear than that, you know, that, you know, I really want to do this, but I need to see these numbers. And I, I mentioned that in March and, and, you know, we have it on the agenda now and I'm still not seeing what I had asked for in March or said I would need to see in March, so. So, you know, obviously there's time yet, but I, but I think I want to make, make myself clear. And I hope the rest of the board agrees with me that that's information they would like to see so that we can make a responsible decision because I really do want to do this. But it would be irresponsible to do it without seeing those numbers.
I, I agree with Kevin wholeheartedly. One thing I want to say is I respect all the vets out there and I appreciate their service to this. Thank you. But I'd like to see the numbers too. Even, even a thought of supporting it would, would seem some harder numbers would help us make a decision whether we go default or max too. So the more information that we can get, the, the better, easier a decision would be.
Different scenarios, you know? The, was it, was it the, the, the minimum, the default, the maximum, and then maybe a few points in between, you know? I'd like to see the different scenarios, can understand it. And then, then that's something that, then we can then put forward very easily when we understand it, so. that, then we can then put forward very easily when we understand it, so.
I would just say that I agree. I think that, you know, we just need to have the right numbers in order to be able to make the decision. You know, I, too, would say, you know, certainly grateful for all that the veterans have done for us. You know, I actually come from a family of many veterans, many of my siblings wartime as well as disabled. You know, certainly appreciate all that's done, and we want to do as much as we can here, but we do have a responsibility to everyone in the town. And I don't know what the outcome is, because we don't have all the details yet, we don't have the information. And I don't think that there's any other agenda here other than making the right decision based on good information. I mean, we've got to, you know, we've got to be able to stand by our decision, and in order to do that, we've got to have, we need some details.
Any comment? No?
I would like to thank, to take this opportunity to thank the veterans for all they've done for us. Again, going back to last March's meeting, we did want the figures and understand what it meant in dollars and cents, and that's the most important thing. The other thing I don't know, maybe even more difficult to characterize, is that we know the Hyde Park School District in terms of families attending the schools, the percentage, the high percentage of families that have minimum, below minimum salaries based on the, those students that receive aid for lunches. I don't know how we could characterize the entire community, because we don't have as easily accessible information on those families that don't have children in the district. To try and maintain a balance, I think that, in my mind, that might have more of an influence on which exemption we choose rather than choose an exemption, but if there's a way of characterizing that also, Wayne, I'd appreciate it.
I, one other thought. We, I mean, we know the number of veterans that are currently taking exemptions. What we don't have is any sense of how many veterans there are who are not taking exemptions.
I'm one.
Okay, but I guess that's the point, and could we get some help in that for us to better understand the numbers? I mean, you know, does the American Legion, is there anyone, you know, is there any place for us to get more information, or even just get a sense? You know, if you take all the people who belong to the American Legion, how many of them are currently taking exemptions and how many are not? Simply so we can try to get some sense of the number, because it could be very skewed. I mean, you know, my guess is there's, I can think of a couple people that I know that I don't think they take exemptions. You know, will they, or won't they? I don't know, but it's certainly a potential. And again, it's just another number, it's another multiplier in trying to work through this number.
Yeah, I mean, you know, my feeling on that is, I would be just, you know, and I think that's a good idea, but I would just at least be at minimum comfortable that if we were to put this exemption in place, there are, we have a fixed number of people we know right now, because, that they're already eligible, because they're already in for the town or the county. So, I'm comfortable just with that number, recognizing, you know what, numbers change. People come and go, and, you know, I have, you have to accept that going forward, that, you know, the numbers can fluctuate, but at least I, there's a fixed number I can kind of compare. If this were in place, for example, last year, what would it have been, you know, and just to get my head around a general idea. You know, I recognize that you'll never know. I mean, even as house, property boughs go up and down, you know, different properties, just in general, that affects our tax bill. So, you really can't get it totally, but you can certainly come close, you know, with the information that, you know, we already have.
Point is, I mean, you know, maybe there's only fifty percent of the veterans, you know, so we may only get half the number. But, just a thought. I mean, if, you know, in trying to get to a better decision, if there's, if there's any place to gather more information, it would, it would be better to have.
Okay. The only thing I would like to say, I am in favor of this. I did serve during wartime and never left New Jersey. I was in air defense. I got a great job out of being in the Air Force, so I think I'm one of the lucky persons. So, the other thing that bothers me is the passing of this law with no funding for, and I am drafting a letter to send to the governor stating that, you know, it's really nice of you to create this thing, but if you don't fund it, you put a lot of people behind the eight ball to have to make the decision. And it's not always easy making decisions up here, I tell you that right now. I would still say that if it's eighteen million, that's still a very small percentage of the total, and I can't see that that's going to, even if it was one, I don't think it's one percent, Steve, I think it's more like one thousandth, one, yeah, because eighteen million is one thousandth of one point eight billion, so that's spread out. But anyway, we need to know the numbers, that's absolutely true. I would like to state that I think that anything short of the default would disappoint me on this. I'm hoping that the numbers come out well enough so that we can do better.
Well, to be honest with you, as far as the default goes, I mean, you know, I would agree, I would, you know, like to try to do the default, and quite frankly, if you want to talk about taking the easy way, the default is certainly, it's easier than going for less than the default, because you only need one public hearing, and, you know, I mean, you know, it's almost more of a rigmarole to get less than default than it is to pass the default, you know, but I wouldn't mind doing the rigmarole for more than the default, I'm just saying it, it just seems kind of silly that if you're going to go less, you have to go through more hoops, so I wouldn't be in favor of that.
All right, I guess that leaves the question of the timing. I would like to beat it up. Steve has said that he'd like to wait, and I understand why, but I need a plan. I wanted to have a hearing next, just before the next meeting, that's November sixth, right? November sixth. And if the board does not want that to happen, then I got to know, so I don't plan on it. So, I guess I need to know, Wayne, can we have that information before the next board meeting?
Yeah, I was going to recap.
No, I don't want a possibility, I want a yes or a no.
Well, there's some dangers in putting the information out the way that...
Then just say no. I want, you know, if you can't say yes, then I'll push it off until December, when you better be able to say yeah. All right?
A little extra time would be appreciated, and I'll recap after.
Now, but we only have one, one board meeting in December, isn't that correct?
Well, I was just wondering, can we have the numbers by the November meeting?
I'd have to see, the, part of my recap will explain why. I was prepared to bring these numbers forward tonight, but I was warned against it from the county, because that's who I worked with. Last year, we did it, I had it set by two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar household, but they warned us against it last year based on the, the information that went out there and how it was taken. So, when I spoke with the woman...
Saving the county.
County level, the person that does this and helps school districts through it, said, Wayne, don't do it. So, I struggled with it myself, because I wanted to, I knew exactly that's where people would want to go, is what, you know, what is this going to look like on a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house? That's what I would, I would want to know. And I'm going to, I'm going to do that, and I run the numbers the same way as we did last year, but just update them for this year's numbers. It might take me a little bit of time. I'm really curious why they would say that, because when we put a bond issue up for, you know, whatever, the heating plant at Havland, you know, you always do it on, well, what's it going to do to, you know, a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house, or whatever? I don't, I don't understand their logic behind that. But on the other hand, you know what, if you give me, you know, if you remember what I asked for before, with, if you pulled those, the eighteen million dollars out as an example, and said, what's that going to do to, you know, and we've got to go with last year's numbers, what's that do to the taxable rate?
Right.
I can figure out in thirty seconds what that's going to do to my tax bill, and anybody else can. And then, you know, likewise, you know, a veteran can look at it and say, yep, okay, so that I get, you know, this much thousand exempt, so that I can back that off, multiply it by this new tax rate, here's my tax bill, he can do it in thirty seconds, too. Then we'll have a very good idea for a public hearing. I mean, just to me, that's, you know, that's what I'm kind of getting at. If we don't want to do it on a typical house, then what's it going to do to the tax rates? Then it's real easy. Does everybody agree with that?
I do, yep.
Yeah. The only thing I would say is, I wouldn't mind seeing that information before we come to the next meeting.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
So, what, so what does that timeline look like then, Wayne?
I have to re-put all of the information through a series of spreadsheets that I did last year. It was, it took quite a while, probably take a little bit more than two weeks for me to finish, so, are we saying we don't have a second board meeting in November?
Or just move, we have two placeholders for board meetings in November. Would we, would we want to just say, if we want to still have one meeting in November, could we just have the meeting on the twentieth then?
That would be fine, that would be great. That would give me more than enough time.
And you can get...
Yeah, as long as I have a couple weeks to decipher, and then get it through the county, and, you know...
Through the board a week or more before the meeting, so that we can...
Yeah, yep.
All right, then...
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, the twentieth.
I propose to move the November sixth meeting to the November twentieth.
That's odd, I had the twentieth on my calendar, anyway.
You should, because it was there in case we needed it, but I'm, I'm still not seeing we have enough to have two full meetings, so instead of having everyone get together for two full meetings, let's go with the second one that was planned.
I would still like to have a public hearing before that meeting.
Sure.
We'll decide on what time and how long, and then if we have enough money, money, if we have enough information to make a decision, I would like to have a decision made on the twentieth, assuming we have the data. All right? All right, thank you.
Doug, just a point of fact.
Yep.
I didn't ask to push this back later. What I was asking was whether there was a reason for the haste that you're pushing through, so...
Okay, all right.
It just didn't seem like a very effective use of our time to discuss this tonight without all of the facts.
Well, I think that part is true, but it was useful to discuss why, why we're not making a decision tonight, and what we need in order to make a decision, so, and that gives more information to everybody else, so. I think it was useful, and I think the moving it to the twentieth should work, and I'm looking forward to a, a hearing and a decision on November the twentieth.
And Debbie, where is that meeting on the twentieth?
I'll have to look.
The one on the sixth was scheduled for Ralph Smith, I have on my calendar.
So, then we would have to move the twentieth to Ralph Smith.
Right.
Okay, so that would be at Ralph R. Smith Elementary School, which is right on nine G.
Okay, well, thank you. We're going to move to eight point two. We have a draft policy for use on outdoor signs. It was sent to the board. Is there any comments at all on the wording? We did change a couple words, if you noticed, on those, on the policy and one on the regulation. Primarily, it was what to do about the electronic signs that we changed. So, if there's no objections to what's there, I'm going to put it on the next board meeting for first reading. Okay?
Do we have any feedback from the town board in terms of whether this meets or helps them see their way clear towards...
I have not gotten any, I didn't send it to them. I don't know if we did.
No, we haven't sent it to the town board, because it's still under discussion, so until it's a policy, we weren't sending it. We also received information from the New York State Department of Transportation that they will not permit us to put a lighted sign at the intersection of nine G and north, south, South Cross Road. So, it changes the landscape, no pun intended, a little, because now we're not discussing putting a digital sign on nine G. We're really looking at putting the sign on our own land on Havland and our own land on FDR, because we've been denied by the state to put a lighted sign of any kind on nine G and South Cross Road, and in fact, the letter stated that we need to take our current sign down.
The state moves in mysterious ways. That's all I got to say. How long has that sign been there?
Long time.
It was there before, it was there right of way.
I know, I know.
You have to remind them, it was built on private property with permission, and then when they improved the intersection...
Yeah, I mean...
I would have thought when they took their eminent domain, or whatever they did to get that piece of property, that they would have noticed the sign was there at the time, but...
Right.
If I remember correctly, Kevin, their plans were to remove the sign when they did the re-landscaping and the redoing, and I think the decision to leave it there was because it was cheaper.
Yeah, I know, but now they write a letter and get it out of there.
Now they're coming back saying we need to remove it, yeah.
Yeah, because they can let us pick up the tab.
So, I'm not, you know, we don't need to take it down tomorrow, but it does change the nature of even going to the town for a Monroe balancing test, because it's, it's on our property, so it's not subject to any of the regulations. Now, that, with that said, you know, we've been working very collaboratively with the town.
I mean, we, you know, we want to be good neighbors, and...
Exactly. But the bulk of the concerns came from having the lighted sign on a highway, and, you know, that's completely removed from the picture. I think the policy is still good. I think it's in keeping with what the town was indicating they were concerned about, but we just don't have a need, there's no venue to go to the town to put a sign up on our own property at this point, so. But, the spirit of the, of the policy at hand is definitely in keeping with the concerns we heard from both the town and the community and the residents, so.
So, that would, if there's a plus, it would get the installations going a little quicker than we had thought.
Yeah, we can pretty much get to go ahead to go out.
I'm wondering if, since Elliot's here, is anything going to be started at any of the schools this year?
Sure.
And can we do like they do on Route eighty-four? Can we put it up about ninety or a hundred feet, so that you can see it over the trees as you're driving down there?
Put it as high as you want, Mr. Heeter. Good evening, all. Just a quick note on the fabrication of the signs. The vendor was waiting for all of the approvals to come through, because a lot of the signs shared matching components. And so, when they go to press the plastic panels and cut all the custom pieces, they kind of wanted to do that all in one shot, so they were waiting for us to give them the go-ahead, that all of our signs were either approved or not subject to approval. We do have the one-directional signs that still needs to be addressed, but otherwise, we're waiting for the DOT to approve the directional sign at North Park, and we need to work with the private owner for the directional sign at Ralph R. Those would be the only ones that would still be hanging in the balance.
Is it too late to ask for a directional sign for FDR?
A directional sign for FDR, that would be in the same format as the North Park and the Ralph R. sign. I believe we would still, we would just have to resubmit an application package to DOT. I don't, I haven't seen the verbiage on the denial, but I believe it was because it was a lighted sign that it was shot down.
Yes.
Same with the opposition to the existing, so it's definitely an option. We do have the template for it. The North Park and Ralph R. directionals are mirror images of each other, they're just flipped around in different directions.
I'm wondering if there's going to be possibly any credit we'd get, because we're putting the signs on our property instead of outside our sites.
It depends on how we power the sign. The FDR sign in particular, one of the issues that was kind of hanging up was that we knew that the existing sign was internally illuminated, and the new sign probably would not draw more than what the supply is at that location on our property. We're going to have to trench power from either an existing lamp post or run a new line from the building, so that cost may be absorbed there.
So, I think we can go ahead, then, with the sign. So, what are we waiting on on directional?
We have a DOT application for the North Park directional, which was delivered to your office for signature and submission to DOT, and that's just because the, the exist- And that's just because the existing directional sign right out here on the bridge is in a DOT right-of-way as the FDR sign is.
But that's to put it up, not necessarily, I mean, could we go ahead with ordering our signs or...
I think what would be safest for us to do would be order the fabrication and delay the installation for the directionals.
Right.
Because we would need the DOT approval for this one here and the private owner approval for the Ralph R. But assuming that the Monroes are all good to go for the other five, the Netherwood and Violet Avenue is not subject to that approval. And if we're going to put the larger LED signs on our own property, then we can go ahead and move forward.
Right, and the DOT directional for here is just a matter of where it's going to be and maybe a couple of inches of height. It shouldn't...
Right, the most they may do is ask us to put it on the south side of the bridge instead of the north side, because of the line of sight to oncoming traffic.
Right, so there's nothing preventing us from tomorrow saying to the sign company, you're good to go.
I don't believe so. Not at all.
That would be a happy day.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a phone call I'll be glad to make in the morning, if you want me to.
I think we're ready. And I'm not seeing why we would hold back at all at this point.
I can order the fabrication. Do we want, or I think, should we collaborate on the precise location on the FDR property where we're looking to put it? I know we kind of have a general idea, but is that something that we want to identify for the board or...
Well, we can certainly talk about that, but it's going to take months to get the signs...
It's going to take approximately ninety days to fabricate the materials. They may want to do some of the site prep work in advance, but I can hold off on that just because...
Right in the middle of the softball field, how's that?
Home plate, if you want.
Tough path to move, no. I'm only kidding.
Maybe we can get a double-sided sign, and the back will be the scoreboard for the softball.
There you go.
And the front will be...
There was some interest about putting a scoreboard on the softball field that the boosters are working on. So if we run power to the sign, that could definitely benefit the athletic department as well.
Maybe that's not such a bad idea.
It's not a bad idea to have a double-sided. One side is the scoreboard, the other side is the sign. So I think we can quickly come up with where to put the sign. I mean, there's not all that much...
Agreed.
To, I don't know. I don't think there's that much to it. I think we should just go ahead with the signs. We'll figure out where to put it on the FDR property.
Okay, I'll make the call in the morning.
Excellent.
Okay. Let me move on to the consent agenda. May I have a motion for the consent agenda, please, as shown in the agenda?
Second.
Any question, any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you very much. Now, we are at 10.1. Special education placements. I have a motion for 10.1, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have reviewed the pack presented to us and recommend its adoption as presented.
All right, thank you. All those in favor? Oppose? Thank you very much. I have a motion for 10.2, consultant agreement for special education services as defined in the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. Let me get down here. I have a motion for 10.3, agreements for universal pre-K. This is for... Martin Valley Learning Center Educational Services. All right. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Oppose? Thank you. I have a motion for 10.4, the first reading of policy, 5460 regulation, child abuse, neglect, and maltreatment regulation, as denoted in the agenda.
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Sorry.
Oppose? Thank you. May I have a motion for 10.5, the creation of a school monitor transportation?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. May I have a motion for 10.6, transfer of funds? As listed in the agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. May I have a motion to re-enter public participation, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? We are now in public participation. Anybody's left that would like to address the board? Please step to the mic. Want to do it again? Okay. I have a motion to go out of public participation.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. Under other matters, I believe we should have a resolution to change the date of the November meeting from November 6th to November 20th, just to make it official.
Sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you. Did you say you wanted a motion?
A motion to change the meeting date. Second, any discussion? All in favor? All right, thank you. Any board subcommittee meeting? There was a tech meeting, but unfortunately I had car problems, so I missed it. Any, anything?
We had a policy meeting.
And a policy, yeah.
Maybe if you can update us a little bit on that.
A very long policy meeting.
Yes.
We did. And actually, we ended up tabling and decided to wait on the two policies we reviewed for different reasons. And none of them are imminent. We're not out of compliance with any laws or regulations in the meantime.
And we did discuss the code of conduct.
You want to go, Steve, or you want me to go for the, oh, are we finished with the policy?
Yeah, I think we're done.
Me?
Yeah.
Oh, we did have our tech subcommittee. Steve Minde Meyer was able to attend. This was the first in our shifted tech subcommittee. We moved from making it a tech subcommittee of the board to expanding that. We were very pleased that we had three teachers present and a central office admin, two central office administrators along with myself. And, was that right? The three teachers, two administrators, myself. And then forest, of course, our director of technology, and Steve is our board member. And we had a very productive session, brainstorming session, about what the new technology plan would look like, how we would frame that, some of our steps moving forward. We had the conversation about having students present, and we determined that we should invite the students in when we need them, not have them sit on the committee the whole time and, you know, maybe get to say one word when, you know... But when it became critical that we needed the students' voice, we would make sure that we would get a group of students to come in. So we were very pleased with how the first meeting went. Our intent was to start to really hammer out a technology plan and felt that we needed more voices than the tech subcommittee. So we were pleased that the administrators' union sent us some people and that the teachers' association sent us some people. So we think we have a good jumpstart on getting that plan underway.
All right, thank you. Any other...
Yeah, I want to report. We had an energy subcommittee meeting. And at that meeting, actually, there were a couple of things. We had an overview of the E-CAP, which is the software program used by Synergistics or introduced to us through Synergistics. So, you know, a tremendous amount of data that's being collected and manipulated and able to look at. And, you know, it's really a matter now of kind of putting it into play and how we use that and setting goals. And, you know, perhaps we can, you know, create some encouragement between the buildings to do even better. Although everything that's happening so far looks good. Looks good. We've got, we can do better, but it looks good. Another item that we discussed is something called the ECS Demand Response Program. And it's basically a, and I may even tap Elliot to come in and give a little more detail on it. But it's a, it's a program where the district can sign, enroll, and the purpose of it is to reduce energy demand or have demand, create demand, or identify demand that can be shed in a situation of high use. Typically, in the summertime, when everybody's running their air conditioners, utility companies are looking for the ability to shed the demand. And they pay based on the amount that you can commit to and then, in fact, shed. Essentially, yeah, why don't you come up, Elliot? I mean, there's no cost to the district for it. It's the type of thing we can enroll in it, make some commitments, and then they do a test twice a year, summer and winter. And based on what, at those test times, how much you actually shed is how much money you, we can actually receive through that plan. Fill in the void, Elliot.
That's pretty much it. It's basically run by the agencies that oversee the power grid for New York State. It's cheaper for them to pay us to not use power than it is to build the two or three extra power plants to support those high-demand times a year. There are, at minimum, two test events for one hour apiece. If they don't have an actual event, you're testing for an hour. And if we can shed, we shed. And if we can't, we can't. The better we do, the more we make, the more money we can make. But there is no penalty for nonparticipation. If you don't participate on a long enough timeline, they may ask you, you know, to thank you very much, but we're not going to utilize your buildings anymore. But this is something that I did in New York City. It's something that my colleagues around the state are participating in in other districts. And it's a chance to make a couple of thousand dollars for the district, so... Really a no-risk opportunity.
Elliot, is there any contract involved?
There's no contract. There's an application for participation. They do provide hardware. Basically, they're smart monitors, smart meters on our utility lines, similar to what we have in our sub-meter program for the Energy Star ratings that we're going for. It's really a clamp-on device. It's not, it doesn't interrupt our power. They can't tell us to shed. They can only let us know when the event is and ask us to participate. You know, those, any buildings that have generators typically would turn them on. In our cases, a lot of what we're doing for conservation is applicable to load shed in that, for me and FNO, I would set the timing differently on major equipment. We may ask certain buildings to go to half-lighting in the corridors, which still allows passable traffic. So that was a common thing when I was in New York City. They would go half-lit in hallways or classrooms even. They would turn half the lights off and use the smart board, which is one light versus the whole room full of lights, you know, that kind of stuff. So there are suggestions, but there really is no commitment and no penalty for nonparticipation.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
So just a question, is there any action, Wayne, just an acknowledgement?
Yeah, it does, like, does the board want to move forward? Because I had brought it to cabinet initially. And bringing it through the Energy Committee kind of gives it your endorsement. And if it's all right with everybody here at the table, then we'll move forward, you know, with...
Yeah, I have to admit, I kicked it to the Energy Committee. I said it sounded too good to be true. So thank you, Elliot, and the Energy Committee.
Okay, moving on to upcoming meetings. We have Monday, October 27th at 4:00 p.m. at the Administration Office, the district leadership team meeting. Also, on October 27th, Monday, at 6:00 p.m. at the FDR High School is the Grace Smith House event, as discussed earlier. Tuesday, November 4th, is Election Day. There's no school, but there is teacher training. Wednesday, November 5th, at 5:00 p.m., Administration Office, the facility steering forum meeting. And Thursday, November 20th, at 7:00 p.m., Ralph Smith is the next board meeting.
Debbie, you'll let Melissa know, right?
There's no need for an executive session. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Before we adjourn, I'd like to thank Lisa for hosting and for baking. It's delicious.
Oh, yeah, it was very good. Yeah. All right. We have a motion on the floor in a second. All those in favor of adjourning? Thank you.